is to crush other folks. We don't need to do that. If we get beyond the profit motive, we can do it. Thank you very much. I hope this discussion of this concept of uneven development helps understand the predicament we're in and the possibilities of getting out of it. Thank you very much to all of you, and I look forward to speaking with you again next week.
Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome, and please have a seat. We'll get our activities here underway. I really want to welcome you, and thank you so much for being here this evening. This for Salem is a very special event. Chamacata, now called Salem, has been home to the indigenous people of the Sandy M. Kalapuyia Band since time immemorial. Today's celebration marks an important milestone in the relationship between the city of Salem and the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ron. The city of Salem's commitment to strengthening our longstanding relationship with the Confederated Tribes and this memorandum of understanding that we're going to sign this evening is certainly a step in the right direction, and it's a concrete step in that direction, and one I wholeheartedly support. Formalizing our friendship expresses our genuine desire to maintain an open dialogue and work collaboratively on issues of mutual interest. I know that there are some exciting projects already underway, including development of our archaeological program, education, and outreach, as well as formal recognition of Native American Heritage Month in November. Again, welcome. We're honored to be hosting you. I hope you enjoyed the food, and I hope you enjoyed the conversation. And again, I look forward to signing the MOU soon with Tribal Chairwoman Cheryl Kennedy. We'd like to begin with a drum song. Cheryl, if you'd like to.
We start first with an invocation, and so I'd like to go ahead and take care of this part in the way that we do culturally. And so I will go ahead. John, would you provide the invocation, please?
Our Creator. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day you have given us. Today is a momentous day. Today is a shared history. Today, we ask a blessing upon the city of Salem, our mayor, and the city councilors, to thank them for their good work. Say, "Lead this city." At this time, we also thank you for the blessings upon the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron and its people, its leaders. Together, we have a partnership amongst our -- between our sovereign governments here today. But for us, partnerships actually, the most important have become friendships, that we're able to sit down at each other's table, share food, share stories, share our histories, and together, as we build upon this for a better tomorrow, for better knowledge of our native people and our ancestors who have walked upon this land. So with that, as we stand before you, we are grateful and humble people, in your name. Amen.
Thank you, John. I too want to thank all of you for coming out this evening. This is an agreement that has been in the making for -- and you may sit down -- has been in the making for a few years. We're glad that we've come to this point. It's all about cultural protection of resources and education. So we are very pleased that we're able to enter into this memorandum of agreement, acknowledging the history, as well as, as we walk forward in the future, the path that we'll go on. So it's providing us some direction, as well as being able to build and foster a great relationship. So I want to thank you, councilors, for all coming out as well. I appreciate it, and I knew this is a great start.
Great. Did you want to introduce your councilmen?
I sure do. Where are they? Okay, we have Lisa Lino, who is singing here on the end. She's our councilwoman. John George, our councilman secretary, is here. And Bobby Mercier is our lead singer. We have Tina, who is here, and Mr. Bailey, who is here as well. So we have a number of staff in the audience, and I can't go without introducing my cousin here. I think most of you know him, Justin Martin. So for all of our cultural resources staff that are here, thank you for being here. Michael Breeze, our attorney, Rob Green. This is a great event, and we wanted to make sure that it was witnessed and that it will go down into history. This is a great undertaking, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Cheryl, very much. Yeah, we'd like to acknowledge Justin as well, who just joined. I also would like to acknowledge our council, Matt Osek, Chris Hoy, Vanessa Nordike, Cara Kazer, and Brad Nink. Brad's our long-term guy. Brad's been here for many, many years. And then a couple of our councils were unable to be here, but send their best wishes and very pleased this is occurring. So thank you. And of course, our city manager, Steve Powers, who's done a great deal of work. And where's Kimberly Fitzgerald, our historic preservation officer? We know has been very involved in this. So thank you, Kimberly.
I don't want to forget our chief of staff, Stacia Hernandez, and her husband, Sergeant Hernandez, and Sarah. I can't see -- Sarah's right here also. So thank you for being here.
And then before we sign this, we thought we would read you the preamble, which I think sets the context for the memorandum of understanding. So Cheryl, you want to leave us off?
I sure do. The memorandum of understanding is entered into by the city of Salem and the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron Community of Oregon, or the tribe, in order to strengthen the government-to-government relationship between the city and the tribe and facilitate communications on matters of mutual interest. The tribe is a federally recognized Indian tribe pursuant to the 1983 Grand Ron Restoration Act, which restored all rights and privileges of the tribe and its members that might have been diminished or lost under the Western Oregon Termination Act of 1954. The area which today makes up the present-day city was ceded by antecedent tribes and bands of the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron that signed the Willamette Valley Treaty of 1855, or the Treaty with the Kalapuyia, 1855, known as the Willamette Valley Treaty. The Willamette Valley Treaty calls for the removal of the bands and tribes from their traditional lands on June 30, 1857. President James Buchanan signed an executive order creating the Grand Ron Reserve, particularly for the Willamette Tribes. The indigenous people from the Salem area, along with the other tribes in the outlying Salem metropolitan areas, were removed to the Grand Ron Indian Reservation.
So whereas the city is organized under the laws of the state of Oregon and is an incorporated home rule charter city, and the county seat of Marion County, and the capital of the state of Oregon, whereas the city recognizes the tribe has historical and active connection to the area now known as Salem, whereas the city has determined that upon request of its tribal government partners, the city will enter into a memorandum of understanding. This MOU establishes a protocol to facilitate communication and cooperation between the parties and to also provide methods for reaching resolution on issues of mutual interest. Toward that end, the city and tribe will use reasonable efforts to proceed under the protocol developed, and that's part of the memorandum. And we will go ahead and sign this now, then, if that's...
Yes, that's great.
There are multiple legal pages here, and we thought rather than read them to you, we'd save them for you to read later at your convenience. So thank you all very much for being here this evening, and we will move on to...
All right.
Did you want to say anything further, Cheryl, and we can cut you off?
I don't. Just thank you so much. We do have a gift for you and the councilors. So John, George, our secretary, and Lisa will make the presentation.
Oh, gosh, thank you.
Why isn't my computer on today?
There are still refreshments, if any of you --
Oh.
If anyone's interested, please... We're going to convene into another meeting then, now, and you're more than welcome to stay. It's our strategic planning session. It's driven to...
I mean, if we use.
He has screens everywhere.
No projector?
Just need those heads up glasses, it was just right there.
Yeah, I talked with Chrisy.
Oh, good.
Yeah, they keep this one as channels.
She's very. Any updates or anything new from the table?
They said, the report that we got is only about a few gallons.
We're live.
I'm going to call this work session of the city council to order. If you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd call the roll, please.
Councillor Kaiser. Councillor Anderson. Councillor Nenke. Councillor Young. Councillor Osick. Councillor Hoy. Councillor Nordike. Councillor Lewis. Mayor Bennett.
Here. So additions and deletions? I'm sorry. I thought I'd wait to get it just.
I move additions and deletions?
I thought I'd just ask if you knew.
We have a report to add to the agenda.
Okay. So, yes, it is. In discussion, all those in favor say aye. Motion passes. Okay, so we're going to discuss this evening the council policy agenda. Who, the city manager, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. In November, council set some tentative policy objectives, activities, actions for further refinement and review by staff for feasibility. And this evening, you have in the agenda packet the results of that review. And Courtney Knox-Bush is prepared to help council go through those items. And staff are here to answer questions you might have regarding any of the items from that November, from that November work session.
Great.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I'm Courtney Knox-Bush with the city manager's office. And I'll be giving you just a brief presentation to outline where we are and where we're going based on the feedback that we had in November. So it's been a while. And we had intended to talk with you about this in January. And we're just a little delayed because of a whole bunch of things that are going on simultaneously. So here's a quick orientation to our annual cycle. Back in November 18th, as the city manager mentioned, we did have a far ranging conversation that was facilitated by Sean O'Day. You were able to look at the 2019 community report and the annual residential satisfaction survey results. And then you also had some testimony to consider. And you came up with a list of priorities. Staff has been working on how to accomplish those goals and outcomes that you've identified. And we're here tonight to gauge whether we're headed in the right direction and get some feedback about whether these are the right ways to spend time and resources, yours as well, over the coming year. So first, I'm just going to remind us about the list of ideas that you came up with in November. Again, these are described in greater detail in your packet that was from late January and is now republished in today's agenda. The first item that you wanted to see more action or as a policy priority for the coming year was affordable housing and homelessness. Specifically, you asked us to consider planning and citing a low barrier shelter, expanding the downtown clean team, providing support to a mobile response unit like Kahoots in Eugene. You also asked for us to consider lobbying the legislature for more mental health support and funding. Oops, excuse me, too fast. The second item that you asked us to consider was coordinating with transit for employee bus passes. You also asked us to look at policies that might stabilize and reduce waste management fees. And then you had asked us to look at economic development activities specific to some areas like the entertainment zone in downtown, redevelopment of North Downtown area and West Salem industrial areas. You asked us to look at relocating and hardening the emergency communication center. And you asked us to look at library book retention and purchasing policies, developing an environmental or climate action plan, increasing safety for cyclists and walkers, and consider expanding the high speed internet idea that's focused right now in the downtown core. There were quite a few things that dealt with communications and engagement, things such as providing a clear route to access and engage with information from the city, engaging youth, connecting volunteers to project ideas in neighborhoods, working with utilities to provide notification of work in a specific area, and building in preparedness and other things into our messaging strategy. So in sum, staff are recommending continuing current initiatives to accomplish the majority of the policy agenda priorities that you identified back in November without any additional investment. And there are some specific actions that we want to address as we walk through the recommendations. So this slide shows those things that are from the 2019 policy agenda in bold. And we've nested some of the ideas that came up in November as other policy priorities nested them where they are, have a good fit in existing priorities. So for example, focusing economic activity in the strong and diverse economy. Right now, we have a policy agenda priority to look at high speed internet downtown. We could continue some of our existing work in the downtown and North Downtown and West Salem industrial area, which are all areas that you've asked us to look at as your policy agenda priorities. So the majority of the economic development issues are already things that we think we can accomplish with existing resources. And then, as it relates to services for the unsheltered, we are already lobbying the state for mental health support in our existing legislative framework. And the library renovation is already a policy agenda priority. The library is planning a strategic plan, which will help to address some of the specific policy issues that you had mentioned back in November. And then, safe, reliable, and efficient infrastructure. We're already working on an asset management and bonding strategy, and we're investing in safe drinking water. The environmental action plan or climate action plan idea is where the smart commuter program naturally fits. That's an existing initiative that we're doing now. And we could expand it to include bus passes. And good governance, that's where the communications and engagement framework fits. And we would like to continue to do the communications work we're doing now. Again, continuing on that theme of being able to accomplish many of the policy agenda priorities that you asked us to look into in November, being able to achieve that within existing resources and existing policy priorities. We have a couple of things that we wanted to address tonight specifically. There are two areas where staff are recommending to continue current initiatives and possibly seek grants to be able to further impact these areas. And that's developing more affordable housing. We can continue Salem Housing Authority projects. We can provide funding to incent additional affordable housing opportunity and create a diversity of housing stock through the land use that, through our Salem, which we're doing now. And then I think, Kristin, you had a quick update that you wanted to share with everyone about another priority?
Yes, thank you. Kristin Rutherford, Urban Development Director. So I wanted to provide a bit of an update on a concept that we talked about at a work session in the fall, which is a single property urban renewal area for affordable housing. We've continued to work through developing that and have not brought it back to council yet because we were waiting to get a legal description for what that urban renewal area would be. And that legal description had been tied to the plat partition there at North Campus. And I think everybody's aware of the delays in the timelines with getting that subdivision finalized. Because it was taking so long and because there's kind of a race against the clock to get the urban renewal area established by the end of June, so that we can take advantage of that low tax base right now and collect that increment growth, Mountain West Investment moved forward outside of the subdivision process to secure a meets and bounds description of what that parcel would be. So that came in just a few weeks ago. And that has allowed us to start to move forward to try to finalize all of this before that end of June deadline. To do that, though, there are some actions that we would need to take that would put this process, some of the communication of the process, out before it comes back to city council for any formal action. And the two, two actions that would need to occur to keep us on that timeline would be to start the super notice process. So under ORS 457, when you create or substantially amend an urban renewal area, there's a requirement that you provide a super notice to the community, and that goes out in utility billings. And that, so we would need to catch that in our next utility billing in order to meet the timeline. Then the second requirement is to provide copies of the proposed plan and report to the affected taxing districts 45 days before the, there is a public hearing held on the urban renewal area. This is a brand new statutory requirement. So we'll probably be one of the first communities to have to go through and comply with that requirement. So to do that, we would need to send out copies of the plans and reports around the first week of March to meet the requirement. But we won't be bringing this back to the council for any action and formal initiation until our first meeting in March.
Kristin, can you share what possible or potential, I'm sorry, potential mix of affordable?
Yes, yeah. So, so the program that we had talked about would provide, we'd have a, a menu of probably three different options in the program. And the program, I want to clarify, can be finalized separate and distinctly from the creation of the urban renewal area. So the urban renewal area, we need to wrap up and meet that timeline. There would still be additional time to vet and finalize the ins and outs of the, of the program for the rebate. So what we're looking at right now for this pilot project would be, at the most, or the largest rebate would be a 97% rebate to the developer and owner in exchange for 20% of the units being affordable units at an average affordability level of 60% of the adjusted median income. So in this situation, they're looking at 246 units. So we would have about 48 of those units would be averaging 60%. So some might be less than 60%. A few might be closer to 80%, but targeting the 60% AMI level. And that comes out, the property tax rebate, at a little over $5,000 a door on an annual basis as an incentive.
Councillor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And can you make sure that my thinking is correct on this? I know sometimes the creation of urban renewal areas are, this can be a little bit controversial because it might impact other districts' revenue. But in this case, it's a single property that has not been on the tax rolls for, I don't know, a few hundred years, if ever, because it's a state hospital property. So this actually is unique in that it won't negatively impact anything in terms of existing revenue. Is that true?
That's correct. It's not going to impact any existing revenue. They would forego growth in revenue.
Right, thank you.
Kristin, are you looking at the entire property or just that portion devoted to housing?
Just the portion that's devoted to the multifamily housing. So we're not looking at the single family housing.
Just the interior?
Just the interior piece that's about a 10, around 10 acres that would be the apartment building on that site.
Would that, I, I'm curious, because we've got then a strip along Center Street proposed as part of the subdivision there. Would we not want to have that somehow included in order to pick up both the revenue and be of assistance to developing commercial along there and having a voice in it?
So that has not been a part of the conversations to date and could not be included at this point as a part of the single property urban renewal area. We could look at creating a separate urban renewal area for a commercial piece to incentivize that development as its own process and provide a similar kind of property tax rebate. It just hasn't been a part of the discussions to date. And because the development of that piece is not imminent, we would have a little bit more time to do that.
Okay, okay, thank you. Brad?
Thank you much. In regards to the fact that it's state property, will there be the equivalent DDF then as compared to SDCs for a portion of that? And what might those?
I'm going to turn to Director Fernandez to answer any SDC or DDF questions for that property.
So if it's, if it's, I'm sorry, councillor, is your question assessed inside of the area or?
Yeah, for this, similar to, say, the Fairview property or any of the other ones where we can't charge SDCs, is there going to be a component? And kind of how would we spend that?
So, so any area, we, we can assess SDCs. If it's an area that's coming off of state ownership, we can also create a DDF program. We don't have to. The reason we've created DDFs in the past, development district fees, is when there is one infrastructure or another that is in need of more attention. If everything is about equal, if the area itself doesn't need a whole lot of infrastructure, then we can just and would intend to assess just SDCs straight up.
Okay, excellent. What's the longevity of this proposed urban renewal area?
We're looking at 30 years to meet the financing pro forma for the property.
And are you asking for anything from us tonight? What are you asking of us?
So I'm not asking for any action at this time. We will be back to take action, but, but to inform the council that we will start the communication and outreach at this time in order to be able to meet the timelines.
Do we need to incorporate this into our, our planning or into this document then?
We'll fold it in.
Fold it in if it's, if everybody's okay?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, councillor.
Thank you. I'm just curious, so the single property urban renewal area, how does it work in terms of like maximum indebtedness? And when do you like close it? What's the triggers there?
So the way we're calculating the maximum indebtedness is going through the calculations of what the growth in assessed value would be over that 30-year period and calculating what the anticipated property tax payment would be every year, so what that rebate would be. And then, you know, making some inflationary adjustments over those 30 years and then using that to set the maximum indebtedness.
All right, thanks.
All right.
Thanks.
Okay, so another priority, our policy agenda priority that you identified when we met in November, was increasing safety for cyclists and walkers to include missing connections and safe routes throughout the city. Our recommendation is to continue funding the safer crossing program and seek grants to further increase safety and add connections that are missing. So that's the staff recommendation with regard to increasing safety.
Courtney, Sarah Stroll has joined us. And we went through the library portion of this pretty quickly. Perhaps we could ask Sarah to speak to more specifically what you mentioned as far as the library's plans to address the policy questions from council, as well as perhaps give council an update on today's opening of the library.
Hi, everyone. So I'm happy to answer any questions that may have come up about the.
Was regarding the library collection and?
Yes. Did anything more specific come up that wasn't answered in the report?
Sarah, there were no questions. I was just giving everyone an update that we planned to address the two policy questions as part of the strategic plan that the library is planning to do.
Thank you. I am so sorry that I was not here already and I missed that. So thank you. Yes, that is the plan, is strategic planning, community input, working with council, and having an overarching plan that helps form the direction for the library that will hopefully answer any questions the community continues to have about the collection.
The collection. What about your funding, resources, parking, and fines? Are you going to be studying that and presenting something to us on that this year?
Yes, yeah, we absolutely will be looking at those things. Parking, we did also include in the report what that's going to potentially look like down the road. The seismic project is a great opportunity for us to address what we've been hearing from the public for a very long time, which is that the quarter machines are not working and that the, the parking situation at the library is something that they would like for us to address, but it's not something that just the library can resolve. We need to work with UD and other groups to make sure that we're resolving that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that'll come in advance of the budget? Or do you know how that will fit into the budget cycle?
Probably be a budget cycle from this upcoming budget cycle. It's part of the completion of the, of the library retrofit project, which includes our opportunity to install different mechanisms at the library parking garage that could accommodate some policy choices for, for council regarding.
21, 22.
Yeah. And we do know that there will be an impact on the budget this year because in the temporary location, which this is a nice segue, in the temporary location, there is no charge for parking. And there are about 60 spaces. And then the off-street parking in that area also is free.
How'd your opening go?
It was amazing. It was so great. It was really, really wonderful. So my worst fear, my nightmare, the like anxiety dream I'd been having was nobody shows up to the library on opening day, right? I did not need to have that anxiety dream. We had a crowd outside who was waiting to come in the doors as soon as we opened. You know, we got to, I, I heard from so many people that they were so glad we were finally open there, that, you know, they were excited about the future of the library and the seismic retrofit and that they were happy to see us in this temporary location and that it looked like a library. They were very excited about that and.
That's great.
And, you know, there are going to be mixed things going on through the future. It is a much smaller space, we're much more limited in what we can provide there. But overall, the reception that we got this morning was great.
How long will we be there?
We will be there until the end of the seismic retrofit, so. Yeah, so we're aiming for summer of 2021.
Okay, Councillor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, just since we're talking about the temporary location, the grand opening is on March the 14th at 3:00 PM, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, it'll be kind of an event from 1:00 to 4:00, but the opening ceremony would be around 3:00 PM, yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah.
And could we back up for just a minute and talk about the strategic planning process?
Right.
What, you talked about community engagement and some other things. Could you just give us a brief outline on what you think that's going to look like?
So my hope is to potentially hire an outside consultant to help us with some of these things. You know, we did the Orange Boy survey, and that was very illuminating in 2018 and gave us a lot of information to, to focus on. But I think that one of the things that we need to incorporate in that is a lot more library-involved focus groups of various kinds and on various topics about the library future. You know, there are basically five areas that we feel like we can contribute to the community, including welcoming spaces, technology, collections, of course, being one of the core ones, learning opportunities such as programs and events, and, and then just the ability to help people find the information that they need and answer their questions. So, so if we can focus maybe on those areas, how they fit within the broader strategic plan of the city and, and have some outside consultants help us shape that and what that deliverable will look like for the city, I think that will be really great. I would like to have elected officials involved and possibly some of the other groups like the Human Rights Commission. We've formed a really good relationship working with a few of the members of that group. So some of the other advisory groups, obviously LAB will be very deeply involved as well.
And maybe the foundation?
Oh, the foundation and friends are always involved, yeah.
Definitely.
Sorry, I didn't mean to make that sound like it was. Sorry, I didn't mean to make that sound like it was given, but, yeah.
Great, well, congratulations on your opening.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Your dreams were met, huh?
Yeah. Well, I'm glad people were there. And please stop by if you get a chance at some point this week and we'll be happy to see you there, yeah.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you so, so much.
All righty, go ahead, Courtney.
All right, so then we had two items that we were recommending for additional investment in 2021, our upcoming budget year. Planning and citing a low-barrier shelter. That recommendation is to include a navigation center and fund and purchase and build it with urban renewal and seek grants for operations. And as many of you know, we have an active request in with the state legislature and we're working through that as we speak, probably. And then the other item that we're recommending for additional investment is the Climate Action Plan. We have the opportunity to carry forward $50,000 from this last, the year we're in and use the Climate Actions Audit Report to begin the Climate Action Plan. Peter, do you want to address any of that?
Thank you. So we put on your desk paper copies of the Climate Actions Audit, there's some extra copies if folks in the audience would like one. If you'll recall, at last year's Budget Committee, there was substantial discussion about not whether we should undertake a Climate Action Plan, but whether we could afford to undertake a Climate Action Plan. The City Manager proposed that we undertake an audit to see what climate actions the city have already completed. So that was, we were directed to do that as well as the Council put $50,000 in the budget in the meantime. We, we were, Public Works was assigned to do that. We hired a, an excellent intern, a young man who is working on his master's in urban and regional planning after completing his law degree. So we, we caught a winner here. He did an excellent job and his, his research is contained in, in the report. What we found is first we did an analysis of, you know, we gathered all the climate action plans that have been adopted in the city or in the state of Oregon. There's about half a dozen or so. And then we looked at what are considered the best municipal climate action plans in the country. And he looked at those and developed a very long list of actions based on the, these climate action plans and then spent a long time reviewing our documents, interviewing our staff to determine what we had already done and because we've done a lot to address climate change, it's just not in one place. It's in a lot of documents and a lot of actions that have just been completed. In the end, the result is that, you know, based on a, on a long list of, of actions, we've completed about 26% of what would be a, a Climate Action Plan in total. So we have, you know, 74% to go. We are recommending that we undertake a Climate Action Plan. One of the extra duties that I had, that I had our intern undertake is what would be the cost of, of a Climate Action Plan. Norm Wright was about right. It's about between 50, well, it could be anywhere as low as $55,000 to $165,000 for, you know, full community input and which I think is where we would want to go. So, so we probably need about another $120,000 or so to, to undertake the plan. We'll be making that recommendation to, to the Budget Committee to, to take that on. The consultant that we're talking to, it's an outfit out of, out of Eugene called The Good Company that has done a lot of action, climate action plans for communities around the state, told us that the work that we've already done really serves a sort of the groundwork for what we do. So this, this effort is, is well-done and, and indeed useful for the consultant. So that's what we'll be looking to do, that, that effort will probably take about a year and then we can, you know, come back to Council, have it adopted and then start working on, on doing additional work.
Great. What, yeah, this is really appears to be very comprehensive. There's lots of it.
Very.
I don't know what else here. We've just gotten it. Can you point to where it outlines the 24%, 26%?
Yeah, so, so, so that statement is in the executive summary.
Right.
And then if you go back, see if I can find it here. In, in Appendix A, that starts on page 37, it just goes on for pages of, you know, what the action is, the description of the action and what the city has accomplished.
So how, how far does it go? It begins somewhere 27?
Well, it starts on page 37. And it goes through, because this is really the, the bulk of the work, through page 49.
Okay.
So there's a tremendous amount of work that, that the city has done already in adopting policies or actually doing work. For example, when we relamped the streetlight system. Before that, when there was the old era program, we relamped all of City Hall to, to high efficiency. We already participate 100% in the PGE Green Energy Program. So, so there's a lot of that kind of work that's already been done, but, but clearly based on what other adopted plans look at, we have more to do.
Okay. And he, and how will this come to us then, Peter? How do you see this sort of rolling out?
Well, what I would, what I would anticipate, and I'll look to City Manager to agree or disagree with me, is, is we will make a, a recommendation to the Budget Committee. This is published, so, so this will just be available for folks to take a look at.
Okay.
The audit itself. We will make a recommendation to the Budget Committee to fund the action. It'll take effect, assuming it's approved, the 1st of July, and then we will, we will use the funding to, to hire a consultant and begin the process. And it'll take about a year to, to do the full public, public involvement process and then, so it'd be back to Council end of next year or so.
You don't see it coming then to us in pieces where you get one section done and bring it to us?
I would, I mean, I, we would, we might consider having a Council Subcommittee or a, or a, a policy advisory group or we might do updates periodically, but no, we would, I think we would undertake this like we undertake any kind of planning thing where, you know, there'll be, you know, citizen groups and, and some kind of policy group and then we'll just bring it to you at the end for review and adoption.
How, now this is going to be read right away. What, as folks comment, aside from Twitter and Facebook, what are the most, what would be the most effective way to get their thoughts on it into the process?
Yeah, so at, at this point, I guess the most, I mean, people can certainly comment on anything and probably the best way at this point, we haven't published anything, would be to just email it to publicworks@cityofasylum.net.
Okay.
And it'll get, it'll get back to us.
And those will be compiled so we can?
Those will be compiled and, and useful. Really, the, the most useful comments would probably be if we missed something to make sure we, we get credit for it, give ourselves credit for it. And if there's a, a proposed action that, it's sort of this assessment that we haven't thought about or if there are things that we should think about as we embark. But, but our, our plan would be to do a full public involvement as part of the process. So really, there'd be opportunities as we actually do a Climate Action Plan to get input from the community.
Do you then think you'll be recommending to the Council soon that we establish a Climate Action Plan Advisory Committee or what are you?
So what I would, what I would propose is, is if, if we get approval for the budget, as we work with our, as, as we set up the, the project and set up the, the project governance, if you will, that would be the time to, to do that. So really after, you know, in, in late summer and into the fall as we, as we get...
The only thing I'll tell you I'm just a little concerned about, there'll be a lot of interest in this, a lot of comment on it. And it's trying to figure out how people can as quickly as possible engage. Because there'll be a lot of ideas that will come out very quickly and then I think as folks talk and think about this in the various groups in town with specialized interests and knowledge, how to, how to best get this into the processes as soon as we can. That'd be my only concern, that we not let it get, you know, sit too long.
Right, right.
You know what I'm saying?
I do. And it's not gonna, again, assuming approval, it's not gonna get, it's not gonna get stale. I would, you know, I'm interested in, as part of our research, we discovered that there's this one firm, there, there may well be other firms that specialize in this kind of programming that have done this work before. So we really would want their advice on how best to set up, you know, to get, to get good advice from and good input from the community and, and from the Council, obviously.
Okay. Well, there'll be interest even in who the consultant is. I mean, I think there'll be, every element of this will draw attention and interest. So I hope we're prepared to take that in and, and work with it. It sounds like you're ready.
I, I hope so.
Well, you put out your emails, so you're ready to go.
A couple of additional thoughts, if I may. Certainly, this process will be transparent and we'll be looking at, as, as Peter said, really for the best practices that exist in the state and nationally. Because of Peter's good budget management, we do have $50,000 available and if it were the desire of Council prior to Budget Committee action, you could get a jump start before the Budget Committee. The concern there would be not to get halfway in or a third of the way in and have, have Council say, you know, we're not interested in adding the additional $100,000. So we do have $50,000 now to get started.
But you're going to recommend the $100,000. Do I understand that?
Yes, you do.
Okay. I, I think there's strong interest, Counselor.
Get going now.
Yeah. Yeah, you bring in supplemental, we'll give it to you. Yes.
I would say to get that governance going because I'm concerned about the coordination with our Salem, it's already well underway and make sure that everything is being duly, used for dual purposes rather than, you know...
Yeah, I, I think the feeling is that we're somehow, I, I don't want to have any impression that it's going slowly or it's not being integrated into other planning activities, anything like that. I think you don't want to get a drag on this. If we can get it, you know, get some backwind instead of headwind in this thing, that would help.
Well, we'll come back with a, a recommendation for a future Council meeting on how to, on how to do that.
Really, really kind of like to get a feel for what your timeline, you know what I'm, you know what I'm up to. Okay, good. All righty.
Okay. So we had a couple other items for your consideration. We had expanding the work of the downtown clean team. Again, I just want to remind everyone that in your packets are a clear description of our current activities and then our recommendation and proposal to meet the outcome that you described. So this is really high level and I apologize for going so quickly and I've damaged the computer. So we were talking about expanding the work of the downtown clean team and our recommendation is to defer that until additional resources are available. Establishing an organized camping site for the unsheltered in our community and as we've talked about quite a bit here lately, our recommendation is to reserve resources for permanent housing, permanent supportive housing. The mobile response unit, we've also talked about that here recently. There is some pilot program developing at the United Way.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back to number two for there for a second on the organized camping.
Yes.
It seems like we've taken a vote on that recently and we have rejected that proposal. So it seems like that one can come off the list in, in my mind because we have actually taken action on it. We considered it and we decided not to.
And Council's taken that action since we had the initial conversation back in November.
Right. But what I was just suggesting is that since we have done that, it might be, you know, worthy of not spending more time on that.
There is some confusion in the community.
We have been getting a lot of emails from people that saw the proposal that was defeated and they think it somehow is still going forward. So, yeah, there's a lot of confusion out there.
Okay. But, but as, as you pointed out, we have taken a, taken a vote on this. So it would, it would be, it'd seem the most appropriate. Now, it may well come up again or you never know, but, but right now, it's not something we want you spending more time on.
Perfect. And that may benefit from some communication. So we can do that as we wrap up your actions from this evening, we can...
One other on the mobile response unit, what about the LEED program? Does that, is that a program that is similar to what we're talking about here, do you think?
The LEED program, the law enforcement assisted diversion. Chief, would you like to respond to that question?
I, I like the United Way concept, but I, I didn't quite, I want to make sure I understand how LEED fits into this concept.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Jerry Moore, Chief of Police. The LEED program is, is different than the cahoots model in Eugene. LEED program is a couple individuals who go out and, on the street and make contact with probably almost everyone there and trying to perhaps convince them to better their lives and try and get into some sort of treatment or some way to defeat the demons that might keep them on the street. The Coots model is a van that drives around and, in Eugene can actually take people to shelters or, or other locations where they can get help. And as I pointed out in that report, the United Way model probably doesn't reach the same levels as Coots.
Okay, thank you. All righty.
And then these four issues are, were raised in November. One was to consider policies to stabilize and possibly reduce waste management fees. Our recommendation is that we could benefit from a little bit more Council direction, policy direction on this issue, and we would like to recommend holding a work session in 2020. There are two issues that we'd like to address in future years. The mobile application for shelter bed information, that's something that we'd like to consider in a future year, future policy agenda. And relocating and hardening the emergency communication center is also something we'd like to consider in a future policy agenda. The sobering center initiative is one that you recommended we remove from the policy, policy agenda for the coming year and we just want to acknowledge that, that's happening here. So with that, we are able and willing to take questions and we'd like to end this evening, as I mentioned in the beginning, with a clear sense of your priorities for the coming year, for your time as well as the resources.
Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Courtney, back to your statement about the sobering center. I know that that failed because two of our community partners sort of withdrew funding. Is there, are they, have they talked at all about potentially bringing that back or trying to re-up with their partnership with us or is it just dead?
My assessment is that it is dead because the funding gap for operations is far too great to be able to meet with existing resources. There's, there was a 350, $400,000 funding gap on an annual basis that we couldn't solve for.
Is the funding gap then, is the, is the capital side of it completed? Is the, is the space going to be ready at Arches or wherever it?
That's a great question. And Kristin, I wonder if you could answer?
Yes, the capital side is being completed. We are filling that gap using urban renewal funds and that will be programmed and used until and when a sobering center can be funded there. It's going to be used as expanded dayroom space, so...
For homeless unfiltered individuals?
Exactly, yes, yes.
I, I don't know. I, I don't know how others feel. I would, I would really prefer to leave that on the agenda as an unfunded. We've got a facility and what we'd be doing then is focusing our attention probably on a, a separate funding stream that would support that, working with our partners, working with granting agencies, perhaps with the legislature in the future. But it seems too bad to just kick it off the list, particularly when you've got this investment in a, you've got a spot. I mean, that was one of the big, and that's one we took care of. Now we, we, we still need to work with our partners out there on a potential use for it. And I know that it comes up regularly from folks. I, I see Dr. Phillips here who has mentioned it over and over in terms of the impact on the emergency room, how emergency room physicians look at it. And it just seems, it seems like we'd be losing the impetus that comes with having the space ready. That's all.
And how do others feel about that idea, keeping it on the policy agenda?
Yes, Counselor, I'm sorry.
Sure. I support it. So one of the things that I see a huge advantage, it actually, it's, it's a good idea in its own right to have a sobering center for the reasons that Dr. Phillips and our ER community, as I understand it, would be supportive of it. But it's also the fact that if you have a mobile response unit, taking someone to a sobering center is a valid option and can be used. And I believe Chief Moore had mentioned that before, that you really are, that these two resources, having a mobile response unit and a sobering center do well on their own. But when you have both of them working in tandem... center do well on their own. But when you have both of them working in tandem, they can exponentially impact folks who are on the streets, having either a mental health crisis, a drug addiction crisis, or both. A lot of folks struggle with triorbidity. They either have a disability, a mental health problem, or a drug addiction, or sometimes all three, hence the term triorbidity. So I would support leaving it on. You know, I would say also that mobile response units, they don't only transport folks to a sobering center or an ER if need be, or a shelter. They can also provide onsite wound care, which is an alternative to taking every little thing to an ER. Very expensive to take someone to the ER. And every time an officer does it, it takes that officer off his, his or her duties, away from their regular patrol duties because they're sitting in the ER waiting for that person to complete that process. And a mobile response unit might have, would have, a licensed trained paramedic onboard who can provide some of that onsite medical care that doesn't require an expensive trip to the ER. So I fully support both the mobile response unit and the sobering center.
Yeah.
If I may, Counselors, if
Yes.
I think the Fire Chief might have some additional information following Counselor Nordike's points. Just, I want to make sure we're factual.
Mike Nibluk, Fire Chief. We've been working closely with United Way and all the partners, the hospital, and the county health. And so, one of the clarifications is that the cahoots model, or whatever they're calling it here, does not have a paramedic onboard.
Right.
It's an emergency medical technician. There's a significant difference between skill levels between an EMT and a paramedic. And we've also talked with them about the requirements to be a transport agency. The city of Salem is the ambulance service area provider for transports. We subcontract that out to our private, public-private partner, Falk Ambulance. And so we have to be very careful with the county and, and the state on other agencies coming in and becoming a transport agency and transporting people to the hospital. If somebody's injured and they need to go to the hospital, they need to go buy an ambulance, not just an EMT. And so we've had those discussions with them, just so they're really clear on what their roles would be in the community and what services they could provide and what services they could not provide under the county health rules and regulations.
So you, what you're saying is, in order for this to occur here, you'll be developing some protocols with them in terms of how this will work and what the limits look like and
So we have our protocols and our medical program director, they would have to develop their own protocols that would not be in conflict with the ambulance service area, which is owned by the city of Salem to provide that service.
We would work with them on that to make sure it works.
Absolutely. We are, we are meeting with them regularly. We are, actually, they, they asked how we could help them. One of the things that we offered up was that we would allow their EMTs to come to our continuing medical education training that we provide for our folks.
Their EMT, who's their? United Way?
The United Way's EMT that would be on this
Ah, okay.
this car. So if they need a continuing medical education, then we would allow them to come sit in our classes as a way to help them to keep their CMEs up. But, but I just wanted to clarify the role because it, it often gets confused with, you know, it's a paramedic, it's not, and, you know, basically they can put a Band-Aid on, they can do some minor wound care, but if they're having a medical issue, breathing difficulty, you know, anything like that, bleeding issues, they need to call an ambulance and have a paramedic take them to a medical facility.
But, Chief, you're not telling us there's a terminal barrier to this moving forward, then? It sounds like you're describing
No, just clarifying, just clarifying the roles, and we've had
Right, right.
quite frankly, United Way is new into this arena.
Sure.
And so they didn't know that there was regulations on, you know, how they would label their vehicle. They want it to look like an ambulance. Well, it's not an ambulance, so there are certain rules around that. You have to license an ambulance, you have to be a provider. So we're just helping them through some of those things.
Great.
But there's a lot of confusion out there in the community about what they could do and how they would, what their role would be.
And you feel like they're moving forward with this, Counsel?
I think they're, I think they're moving forward in the right direction.
Great. Thank you for working with them on it.
Just want to make sure the right informations out there.
How, do you have any sense of how soon they'd be on the street? Do you have any feel yet?
I have, I have not heard a, a date specific.
Okay.
I know that they have, I think, got the funds to purchase the vehicle, which is probably the easiest piece. They still have to get, they're going to have to have a medical patrol officer and some protocols written up for what their scope of practice is to be able to operate, and those types of things. So I think they're a ways away. I think they're moving forward, though. They're, you know, we're meeting with them regularly to help, you know, provide information to them and work with them when we can.
Great. Thank you, Chief, and thank you for doing that. Counselor Nordike?
Sure. Thank you so much for the clarification. That's very important to me as well. So my understanding is that other models have use of paramedic, but what you're saying is that the one that they're looking at here would be an EMT, and I do understand there's that distinction.
That was, that was my understanding from them, that they were talking about an EMT and a, and a social services provider as the team to go out.
Is, is this an LCSW, a Licensed Clinical Social Worker, or what's the, as I understand it, the cahoots model has your medical person and then your mental health person was the basic breakdown?
I don't know what level of training they're going to have for their mental health person onboard. Haven't got really to that detail. We were just trying to make sure that they weren't running a file of the ambulance service area and the agreements we have with the county and county health, and I don't think they had really had those conversations till we kind of brought everybody together and said, here's the rules and the regs and, and we want to help you figure this out. And I think there's a role for them in the community, absolutely, given the right parameters and those kind of things.
And if I may, I have one other question. So the cahoots model in Eugene, the cahoots persons would have the 911 dispatch, you know, on their shoulder, and they would be plugged into their 911 response system. Is, are we intending on doing that here in Salem as well?
So that's a detail I think we still have to work out. That's how they're doing it in Eugene, but it's more complex than just saying, hey, we want to, we want to use a 911 number for, for this. The 911 center is, is the second busiest dispatch center in the state right now, receiving lots and lots of calls. So I think that could be worked out, but I don't know that those details have been worked out yet. And I think they're through the non-emergency line in Eugene, if I'm not mistaken. I don't think they're going through 911. And I don't, I don't know on that, but I heard that they were through non-emergency. So they were, they were peeled off through non-emergency and then they were dealt with in that matter. So they weren't, they weren't jamming up a 911 call waiting to come in.
Good. Okay, Counsel, Counselor Kaser.
Just back to the comments about the, the sobering center. I, I think I would like to keep it also on the agenda or policy. And I think we really need to go back to Marion County and Salem Health and ask them if, if they're at all serious about helping with this issue. I think they should be. I think they have very
Just a minute, Chief.
I think they have a lot of liability if they don't possibly, so I, I would really, I think we need to keep it. I think we need to press them to help us. It's their problem too, not just ours.
Yeah.
And they need to help contribute to pay for that.
Okay, very good. Chief, could you keep us updated on this at council meetings, whenever there's anything going on or some piece of information you think would be helpful there? I think we're all real interested in how this progresses.
Absolutely.
Great, really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we need to vote on keeping the sobering center?
No, I think
You think you get a sense of counsel?
I have a sense of counsel, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So if I could just review what I think we've talked about, and you can tell me what I've missed. In, in increasing affordable housing and providing services for the unsheltered in our community, we are adding in the single property urban renewal area. We are keeping plan and site a low barrier shelter. We are keeping sobering center, and we are keeping the mobile response unit through the United Way.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
And then, we took organized camping off, and you've also asked us to begin now on the climate action plan using the 50,000 from this current budget year for engagement and looking into a governing structure.
Okay.
Good. And then, if I could just ask for direction on the last issue, there's a page in your packet at the very, very end that is the tentative city council work session schedule for the coming year. And there was one issue that we were recommending that we needed a little bit more direction on, and that has to do with the stabilizing and possibly reducing the waste management fees. And that's something that we would be looking to you for a work session to give us a little bit more direction. And if you look at the policy, excuse me, if you look at the work session schedule, it's a little crowded in the beginning of the year already. So just wanted to note
Well, when do we deal with, with those fees again? What's our timeline look like to be, to kind of
Ryan?
When will they be back? Anybody know?
We are, we are on the two-year cycle.
This is the regular
And this is the regular, correct?
Two years?
Possibly two years.
Well, later, later this year, get it into your schedule if you can.
Okay, it's your schedule.
When?
It's your schedule. Later this year.
Later this year.
Excellent. Are there any
That could be next week. I mean, just later this year, anytime you want.
Are there any other policy agenda topics that you want to address?
Counselor Kaser.
Thank you. I'd like to talk just for a moment about the, the downtown entertainment zone. And, and I think, you know, I read this, the staff report on it, and I think I may have not perhaps explained what I was thinking. As we get more residential downtown, like with the Coes development going in, with the Court Street, or I forget what they're called, the Court Apartments, Court in Front, I think what we need to do is make sure that the noise that's currently permitted is going to be compatible with residential in the downtown. We want people to live downtown. We also don't want them to live with, if, if the noise goes late at night and it's really loud, it's going to prohibit people from wanting to live there. So I, I would be in favor of examining something just to see if we're actually on par with, with increasing residents downtown, and it's compatible, I guess. So I think that got missed probably back in November when I talked about it, but that's what I was going for. I know we have a pretty high limit for, for noise already for areas, but it doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense especially if we want more people living downtown.
So I can speak to that just briefly. So, yes, in looking at an entertainment zone, what we have right now is a very typical level for a commercial business district. It's a common level in commercial business districts in many comparable cities. So entertainment zones, which is what the research was about, was about increasing it beyond that base commercial zone, right? So if the, if the interest is in looking at, is a commercial business district noise limit too high for residences within that commercial business district? We can look at that, but I will say from what I did explore that our current limit is a very standard limit within a few decibels, five decibels or so, for commercial business districts. So I then, I think the question is, do we want to explore making our downtown noise limit closer to a residential zone noise limit, which, which then, you know, runs into a bunch of different issues for just business viability in a downtown.
Yeah, and I'm definitely not suggesting that. I, I think I would be interested perhaps in the research.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So that as I get emails and calls from people, I can give them that.
Okay.
But I don't know last time we looked at it, and I, but, but I would be really interested in the comparable cities and what they have, and, and, you know, I know like Boise is often mentioned as a comparable, so
Okay.
Having some of that would help.
Sure, I'll go
If we decide to not move that forward, or if there's not council, you know, will to do that.
Okay, I can go back and look at what was already gathered for the staff report and then see if we can look at Boise and a few other cities to add to that. Okay.
Okay. Would you like to keep the entertainment zone on the list, or do you, are you, are you interested?
Well, actually, I mean, as far as like increasing the level, I think, you know, there could be some benefit of, of that to kind of establish an area of downtown where we really want to see like nighttime activity. It's pretty spread out now.
Yeah.
I mean, it could behoove us to actually designate a place. Like, I know High Street's often been
Yeah.
that kind of, there's the theater there, a bunch of restaurants, you know. Nobody lives on High Street. There's some businesses, office buildings, but there's no apartments. So, I mean, I think something like that, especially if we want to focus economic growth on a certain area of downtown, it could really benefit to look at something like that.
Give them a higher decibel level, yeah, it's an interesting idea.
Right. So I would be supportive of that. I think it's up to the rest of the council if we want to do that, but I, I would be supportive of looking at that.
Okay, so, you know, noisier downtown. What else we got going on? Anyone else want to bring up anything that is not here? All right, let's get some public, oop, sorry.
Sorry, I had one more question about the library, parking at the library. So when I was reading the staff report, it sounds, I was a little confused because it said this would be a great opportunity during the seismic retrofitting to change the parking meter technology, which I completely agree with, but then it said we would do three-hour free parking. So I was confused. If we're going to do three-hour free parking or parking meters or, or three hours and then you pay, or what?
I think the primary idea, and Sarah, you can speak more directly, but the primary idea is that you have more flexibility by allowing, by having a different technology in place. You have more flexibility so that the first three hours could be free.
Yes, that, that's correct. And three hours is the, the, what I would like for free parking, the technology would be the kiosks that we have elsewhere in the city, which have different ways to be, from my understanding, different ways to work for the library. But the idea that I would like to explore is having at least some time free, and three hours would be optimal for, say we had a longer program that was a 90-minute to two-hour program, and then people wanted to find something in the library to check out as well that would give them time to do that.
So would it be a mix, then? Like, you'd offer so many spaces free, and then others would be metered, or would it be like you could go there and park for three hours and then you, the meter would know in three hours is up
Yes.
and then start charging you?
Yes, that would be the idea there.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, we'll have a lot of time to go into this one in detail with you. I'm sure there'll be a lot of interest.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Okay, could, I'm going to have public comment, or Courtney, are you done?
Great idea.
Okay. Dr. Phillips?
Thank you. Truly, thank you. So my name is Trevor Phillips. I'm a longtime resident of Ward Three, and I came here to testify tonight in support of the sobering center. So I really appreciate your guys' conversation, Mayor Bennett and City Council, keeping that on your policy agenda. It, it was one of the top recommended solutions proposed by the Downtown Homeless Solutions Task Force that I served on, and I really appreciate the comments by our Fire Chief. Healthcare is kind of complicated, and I, I did briefly speak with one of the administrators of cahoots. There is a, a handoff in that situation. But regardless, the way I look at it is that they're a three-legged stool. The homeless, I'm sorry, the sobering center, the navigation center, and a mobile response unit work best together. They have, you know, a synergistic effect. So I really appreciate that you guys kept it on the, the agenda, and I, I look forward to, you know, seeing it in full fruition in the future.
Okay.
So thank you.
I think we all do. It's been, it seems like it's been years we've been working on that sobering center, so I'm, I'm kind of looking forward to seeing it in action myself. So thank you. Pamela Lyons Nelson.
Pamela Lyons Nelson, Ward One. I have a very brief thing to say. I've been talking with many people about the work of the city council, and the comment that was made last time, that people don't realize how much work you've done. And I don't think, I don't know exactly how to get that out, that you, but, but the, the feedback that keeps happening is that, okay, so they've got long-term goals that they're working on and making wonderful progress on it. And then there are the short-term goals, but nobody defines short-term goals in the unsheltered community the way you folks are defining it. You're defining medium-range goals, but they get called short-term goals. But when something's out six months to two years, that's no longer a short-term goal for the, for the situation we have. So what I'm suggesting is that you consider changing the terminology just a little bit here, so that people know you have immediate goals, mid-range goals, and long-term goals. And then I think you'll get the credit for doing the things that you've been doing long-term. I think we'll see the proportionality of that. Next year is not a short-term goal. And when that's made clear, as it is now at practically the end of the shelter season, then I think, I think there will be a wider understanding of what, what is being talked about and what the terminology is. And that's all I had to say.
Great, thank you, Pamela. Okay, anyone else? Yes.
Hi, I'm Phil Carver, representing 350 Salem. I live just outside the city limits and the urban growth boundary.
Well, welcome to town.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We want to congratulate and, and thank We want to congratulate and thank very much the staff, Manager Powers and the city council members who have worked on this issue, and then all the rest of the staff in terms of a really great proposal for a climate action plan. And we concur that the public involvement piece is the most critical and the design of how, how that works. And we don't have a specific proposal for an advisory committee, but I think that that could be an element to bring the groups. The key thing about advisory is not to be just some random citizens or kind of representative citizens, but to have really the groups, like the Chamber of Commerce and the groups that represent the minority and low-income communities and the environmental communities and the people who are concerned about too much density. I mean, we really want to, all the citizens and groups to be really supportive of this or at least to be grumblingly acknowledged that they were involved and they really can't see a better alternative or they understand why it's being done. And that, that process is really not a come on down and we'll do a tabletop exercise. It's really a keeping the same representative of these groups. It may not be the official representative, maybe kind of the, the community concept leader or some, some such sociological notion. And we have, we have some expertise. We have a sociology professor from L.A. who can help advise. And so we'd maybe like to have some consultation with city staff about how to set up an advisory committee that's broadly representative and helpful. Really, the whole goal is to have this be just what you want, have the citizens and groups involved and have them have buy-in, at least buy into the process, if not to the final outcome and recommendations, so.
Great. I hope you'll share those, that recommendation. I think that's really quite good recommendation with Mr. Fernandez. He's calling for, for help, so we'll
Okay. Well, I think we'll put together a written recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I guess our final action is to adopt council goals. Is that where we are?
What are we going to do?